Welcome to the October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. We're glad you're here tonight. We welcome your attendance and glad to see you participating. We'll get into our agenda here for tonight, and I'll call the meeting to order. And if you would, please stand for our invocation and our pledge. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to do the people's business. We, we thank you for your grace and your mercy and your redemption. We ask that you watch over us and guide us tonight as we do the people's business at Surrey County in a proper fashion. We ask for wisdom. We ask for safe travel and mercy. We ask for you to heal the sick, afflicted, and those who are in distress and who need the attention of our Savior. We ask for continued guidance going forward to do the people's business here in Surrey County. We ask all of these things in the name of our Savior, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, gentlemen, you have your agenda for tonight's meeting. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, Commissioner Marion, to approve tonight's agenda. Second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Also, you have the meeting minutes from the second of October. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of October the second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker, to approve the meeting minutes from the second of October. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Maybe my memory doesn't serve me, but was Commissioner Marion here at our last meeting?
Oh, he was.
I, I, in order for it to be correct, we might need to, he, he was absent.
Okay.
It's on record that he's here, so.
Change is so noted. Clerk has it, and the approval would be with the correction.
It would be with him.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for your scrutiny there. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the meeting minutes from the second of October are approved. I'll call on the county manager for tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. First, the tax department's end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports for the board's review and approval. Next, there's a worker's compensation claim from HR. And next, from HR, position reclassification and emergency services. From the finance office, recommendations for surplus vehicles, that's from the sheriff's office to DSS. And finally, request purchase of fuel truck for public works. This is coming before the board, even though it's budgeted, you would frozen because of the enterprise leasing transition. So you'll need to approve this separately, even though it is budgeted. And that's the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and that is still all one motion, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Motion, Commissioner Johnson, have a second? Second, Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the consent is approved. Okay, we have a special recognition tonight. We have two recognitions for the register of deeds, and we also have two for the emergency medical services. Gentlemen, if you would, come down. All right, if our registered deeds folks would come up, please. Lakin B. Haynes, as well as Misty Collins, yes. All right. Welcome. Good to see you, Misty. This one is for Ms. Haynes. This is a certificate of recognition for Lakin B. Haynes, Deputy One, Register of Deeds. Lakin has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for earning the title Certified Deputy Register of Deeds by successfully completing the certification program through the North Carolina Association of Register of Deeds. The Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Surrey County are grateful to have such a highly qualified individual as yourself to give time and service the sixteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. Congratulations, Misty.
Okay, Misty Collins. Deputy One, Register of Deeds, this certificate is hereby presented to you for earning the title Certified Deputy Register of Deeds by successfully completing the certification program through the North Carolina Association of Register of Deeds. The Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Surrey County are grateful, and we're glad to have such a highly qualified individual as yourself to give their time and service. This award is presented to you this sixteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Todd, would you like to come up? Any, would you like to say anything, or you folks want to get a photograph?
I want to thank the commissioners for recognizing my staff. I will tell you, this certification process is not for wimps. You have to go to the school of government and pass a test, and when I went down there, I came out, I thought I'd flunked. So it's, it's something you have to study for, something that our very own Bud Cameron from back in the day was involved in getting it started. And then after that, you have to go through some further process of, of completing courses and, and other things that my staff has done. This gives your Register of Deeds office, everybody in the office who is eligible based on seniority and based on time of service, is now certified. So I want to congratulate my staff on that. And it's, it's very appropriate that today is boss's day, and I have all of my staff here, because if it wasn't for my staff, they make me look a lot better than I really am every day, I promise you. Thank you. Okay, everybody. Thank you all.
Congratulations, thank you.
Now for our EMS life-saving awards, Francisco Lenarias. Eric, is he here tonight? Okay, I'll, I'll read this on his, Francisco Lenarias, paramedic, Surrey County Emergency Services, hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of five life saves to the citizens of Surrey County. The Board of Commissioners pleased to award you this certificate of recognition for your demonstration of high integrity and outstanding service. Presented this the sixteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. So I'll pass this on to Eric. Jonathan Young. Jonathan Young, paramedic, Surrey County Emergency Services, has hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of his ten life saves to citizens of Surrey County. The Board of Commissioners is pleased to award you this certificate of recognition for your demonstration of high integrity and outstanding services. Presented this the sixteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-three, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, Bill Goins, Larry Johnson, and Mark Marion. Congratulations.
Give us a good word.
So again, I appreciate you taking the time to recognize our paramedics who work for the county. When we go to school, this is one of the things that we prepare for. This is what we want to be able to discuss, talk about, and say, we saved a life. And so the representation of Jonathan for our service tonight is just that such thing. So we're very grateful and appreciative. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll have our open forum part of our meeting tonight. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak on any topic of interest to Surrey County, its citizens, or this board, please state your name and your telephone number, and welcome, Mr. Stanley, come right on up.
Me again, Danny Stanley, three, three, six, seven, five, five, zero, six, eight, zero.
We're always glad to see you, Danny.
Thank you. I appreciate you putting up with me. I've been trying to find resources. I've talked to Kataba County. They have the, the orphan road system going. I found out it will not work for us because they turn, they get the road set up and turn it back over to the state to be maintained. The state will not help us because the road is a dam. And they made that very clear in writing, don't call us back, we're not going to help you. And I called a guy today, and he said, I'm sorry, there's, nothing's changed, we can't help. So that program that Kataba County and a couple of other counties has will not help us. But there's a FEMA grant that we found, actually. Andrew is, is one that came up with this. It's about BRIC, which is reducing risk through hazard medication. In other words, it's building resilience in infrastructure and community programs to shift things from reacting to a hazard to coming up with a way to prevent the hazard, which is what we need to do now. We know the, the covert's going to collapse, we just don't know when. But this grant will help us get it done before it collapses. And in the, the day, it says on FY two thousand and twenty-three, funding opportunities published, the application period will open on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is today. The application period will close on February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. And then from there, the, the application process will be actually going through. I'm hoping that y'all will help us apply for this grant, because I think there's a possibility here that we can get the covert done and maybe get the road paved, so this road don't wash away. Every time we get a heavy rain, the road's just a disaster. I'll, I'll give you pictures of it before. The road ends up with, with ditches, you know. I have had ditches as much as a foot deep. When you go across that with your car, it ain't good for you at all. But I'm willing to work, do whatever I can to do this, to, to help any way I can. I'll come up here and, and work with whoever you want me to, to get this done. But this is something that actually that, that I think that you'll see that it does need to be done. It, it's the only resource that I've found that we have a possibility of helping. That's all I can do.
I'm gonna, you've been here so much, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. I've, I've been, I've, I came out and looked.
I appreciate your interest, yes.
I like to lay my eyes on things, so I drove down, looked at it. Who owns the pond?
That belongs to, let me think of his name. Sometimes I have memory lapse, so. My wife hit me in the head so much. I'm just kidding, but. I can't remember his name. I, I.
To me, it's not a very big pond.
It's not.
It's a mud hole. It's really a mud hole.
True.
Has anybody ever thought about just taking and doing away with, with the pond and putting a, putting a pipe in and being done with that, and you'd have a road in there, and maybe?
We have asked him about that. He bought the property two years ago, and the pond was the reason he bought the property. He said he, you know, we asked him if in any way he would consider it when we found out the covert was damaged. I had, I had the, the men from the development meet me down at the, the covert, and we all tried and decided what to do. This was in February, two thousand and twenty-two. And he was there, and we asked him, would you let us do away with the pond? He said, well, that's reading about the property, you know. And he has went around and put lights in it, and lights around the pond at night, little spotlights, you know. And he has, his family comes over evenings, sometimes on weekends, and has, you know, they'll eat there beside the bank, I guess, fish or whatever. He's actually asked the rest of the people in the development not to fish there. But I don't know, that's, that's his property, you know. If he doesn't want anybody fishing there, it's, what can you say? But, I mean, we've all, we've all fished there. I've been there for seventeen years, and we've always been allowed to fish there until he bought the property.
I get, I mean, I, I understand, you know, where you at. I mean, it, I, you know, it's, we all have issues, and, and we've talked about these, we were talking about ordinances and about land, about subdivisions, and, you know, when you, when you put a bunch of houses in a place and, and it, we, we debated one night, and, and we used your, your neighborhood as an example.
Okay.
And that's, knowing, when you built it, you knew, you knew, you knew what you had.
Well, you'll have to blame Mr. Hodges for that. He's dead now, but he's, he's the one that faults.
I'm just saying, though, and there's roads far worse than that one.
I don't doubt it. Well, my, my son, you're not blaming my son for that, because he maintains that road. We bought a tractor just to maintain the road, and he spent two thousand dollars on a land plane. That's reading the road looks like it does. He, every time the road washes, he gets out there and fixes it.
And it might be one of these deals where you, where you form an HOA now, and you say, let's pay, let's pay fifty dollars a month, and let's fix this thing. I, I, from a county standpoint, we're, we're not in the road business.
I understand.
And so that's kind of where we're at.
Right.
I'm not saying that they're not going to help you with, with an application or whatever, but at the end of the day, there are other places that are just as bad. And, you know, I feel like you want us to give you an answer on, on, well, well, we're, we're going to do this. We're, we're not, we're not in the road business, and that's, I think people don't understand that sometimes, because even state-maintained roads, I mean, we can, we can sit here and debate on whether or not to close the road, ask the state to close the road, or what have you. But at the end of the day, it's just, it doesn't fall to us to fix a road, especially, especially into a, into a neighborhood like yours.
I understand that, and I, I'm not asking you to do that. I understand. We do need some help financially, is reading, I'm hoping we can do a grant. The man that made the development, he wouldn't let, the state tried to engineer the road. That would require side ditches, you know, routing the water away from the road. He wouldn't let them do that. And now they, I, I've talked to him again today, because there's no drainage built into the road, and there's, and he's, the pond is a dam. They won't help, because it's, it's puts limit liability, I guess. All we're trying to do is, is if, if that thing goes down, if that covert collapses, there's going to be eleven families that has no fire protection, no police protection, no EMS protection, no way to get groceries, no way to go to work, because you won't be able to get in and out. There is the only way. There is no other option.
Andrew, is this, what's the deadline on this grant?
Two thousand and twenty-four.
February?
Yeah.
All right, well, we've got some time to make a decision on whether or not, would the county have to participate formally in, in a, in a grant application, or would it be the landowners? Okay.
If the landowners can do it, I won't bother y'all anymore.
Yeah.
What is it, what does it say? Does it say that, does it say that you can do it, or does it, does it have to have the blessing of the county?
Andrew, can you shed light on that?
It's not, not exactly clear eligibility, but it doesn't end with, it doesn't look like.
If that's true, I won't bother y'all anymore. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. That's, that's what we're here for, is to help, help people. You know, the, we see county roads, as you well know, Danny, we see county, I mean, Jarvis Plantation Road down here, for heaven's sake, it's two miles long and dead end, and can't hardly get in and out. It's got thirty-some homes, and, you know, all that precedes nineteen, I think it was the late seventies or early eighties, the legislature made a change on that to where the state that take, takes over any road in, in North Carolina, it has to be brought up to state standards and drained and ditched and paved, and then the state will take it over.
Right.
But for sure, we sympathize with you, although there's very little we can do. And, you know, we have to also be careful as a county about setting a precedent, helping what you do for one, you have to do for, you know, and taxpayers have to foot the bills, so.
I'm sure, and totally.
Any way we can help you on that, just let us know, we'll, we'll, you know, just be glad to, to, if we can.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I am Paula Sheets. My address is one twenty-four Northwood Drive, Mount Airy, and my phone number is three, three, six, seven, eight, three, seven, six, nine, nine. I've been a nearly three-year member, volunteer member of All Stars Prevention Group here in Surrey. And joining me tonight is Melissa Mundy, and we'd just like to take a couple of minutes each to raise awareness about what our group does, as well as to invite community members to join us about once a month. All Stars Prevention Group is a community advocacy group originally started by the Surrey County Office of Substance Use Recovery. We meet in the basement of the historic courthouse in Dawson the first Tuesday of every month. Our group is a mixture of passionate community members whose lives may have been directly affected by substance use, like Melissa and I and other mothers whose children have suffered with addiction. Also, other family members, as well as people in recovery themselves who want to know how to give back. Also, professionals from area agencies related to substance use prevention, mental health, youth services, public health, and so on. Some common topics of discussion at our meetings are substance use prevention, the goal of which is to prevent substance use disorder, which is now recognized as a diagnosable illness. Raising community awareness of recovery resources right here in this county for those who struggle with substance use. Many people don't know the resources there. Also, we cover mental health topics such as suicide prevention, and eliminating stigma or shame, which can be a barrier to community progress on all of these topics. Our busiest week each year is Red Ribbon Week, coming up in our schools, October twenty-third to thirty-first. We prepare and deliver materials to city and county schools and prepare assemblies for that, which is the largest youth prevention effort yearly. This year's theme is be kind to your mind, live drug-free. What I love about our meetings is that no matter who joins us, they leave feeling heard and having learned about what is really going on in our area. If you have questions, chances are someone in the room has the real answers you have been looking for. So again, we invite everyone to join us in the historic courthouse, first Tuesday of every month at five PM. There are no minimum time requirements or pressure to consistently come, though chances are you will be inspired to do so as Melissa and I have been. Again, that's All Stars Prevention Group, and I'll hand, hand the time over to her now. Thank you all.
Hello.
You.
I'm Melissa Monday. My number is three three six four zero one three two five five. I joined, I was the first member to join the, um, All Stars. We do community events, um, when the first community event we did. Um, when we have our stuff laid out on the table and the parents would walk up and they would see what we were talking about and they're automatically hiding their kids. They don't want their kids to hear it. Here we are three years later and now the parents are like, listen. I had the opportunity to speak to fourteen middle school boys. They were the North Carolina twelve-year state champion baseball team. I spoke to them about drug awareness, um, drug prevention. I was amazed. All the parents just came and gathered and listened and all the boys were very focused. Three years ago, that never would have happened. Parents would have been like, don't talk too much up. We have made a huge, huge difference in just three years. Um, this is, um, the little packets that were given every fifth grader in Surrey County. Elkin City and Mount Airy City, all the fifth graders get these, got a red ribbon, got our information, a little digit and a pencil. Um, the DEA provided us with, um, pencils, pens and ribbons. I brought a packet of ribbons if y'all want them for Red Ribbon Week next week. Um, we are giving all middle school students in Surrey County, Mount Airy City and Elkin City. Um, these, they say be kind to your mind, live drug free. They have headphones in them since all the middle schools require those. And we figure they can put them on their book bag and look at this all the time as a reminder. So I just wanted to let y'all know that what we do, our outreach is making a huge, huge difference. Any questions?
Thank you for what you do.
You're very welcome.
I've been to some of your events. It's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Y'all want ribbons?
Probably get one next week at one of the events.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I am Dawn Lawson and my phone number is three three six three two five seven seven nine two. I am the owner of Creative Designs Flowers and Gifts and Creative Designs Wedding and Event Rentals. Thank you tonight for the opportunity to speak. On September the twenty-ninth, I received a letter from Surrey County N G nine one one addressing office. Stating to me that my new address is thirteen fifty-four South Main Street. And I said, what? No notice, no visit, no phone call, nothing. But a letter telling me that my address has changed three days before I got the letter. I have been at this location for twenty-seven consecutive years. And did anyone ever stop and think of all involved in changing a business address? The list is so long, I could not list it all, but I'm gonna try. Bank accounts, checks, bank, mailing, advertising, and a lot of twenty twenty-four is already printed. I have five hundred dollars worth of calendar sitting in my shop right now that just came in. Uh, magazine advertising coming out today that I spent over a thousand dollars for an ad. It's for the next six months for marry me. Um, I've spent money on websites and advertising and all these things that have to be changed. Vehicle registrations, computer programming, branding, accounts payable and receivable, uh, Google. That's a huge one, plus the other hundred search engines and the cost of all these things. Can you just imagine the cost and all the hours it's going to take to change a business address? UPS will only forward my mail for thirty days. Customers that have paid me for twenty years have it all programmed, you know, mentally and in their computers. A few other questions I might raise. According to addressing, uh, the addressing ordinance adopted by the commissioners on June twenty-first of two thousand four. My address was adopted at twelve twenty South Main Street. Did anyone contact me then to confirm the address? Did anyone contact me prior to this letter start, starting my new address? I would think you would all have the courtesy to at least call, if not come by, do a, a site check. Um, there's never been a problem in finding me with mailing my tax bill to the twelve twenty South Main Street. Um, only thing affected by this address change is myself and three vacant lots between me and Subway on South Main. Subway is in the Mayberry Plaza at eleven thirty South Main Street. There are three vacant lots between us. Um, on your papers I handed out earlier, there is pictures, the first two are the first two lots and the second one is two pictures of the third lot closest to me. Um, either of these lots numbers could be changed and affect no one. They don't have a mailbox and there's not anything built on either property. Um, no cost was this even considered? If you eliminate the twelve twenty South Main Street, what happens to the whole twelve hundred block of South Main? There's nothing. Does it just disappear? There are a few things I'm very passionate about, which is God, my family, community and my business. I've spent thirty-one years in building my business. And at this change, it will be like starting all over. I am here to ask for your, to you to all reconsider the address change. And please take into consideration all of the negative impact and the costs this will have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
Thank you.
We don't normally, um, address public, public forum comments, but we're going to because I, there's a lot of people leave and, and what have you. I have worked on your, um, issue, uh, a couple of days. I worked on it, um, if, well, I think last week. And then, and then I worked on it a little bit today as well, made some phone calls.
Thank you.
And, uh, I, I do agree with you that, that you should have been notified. Um, and, uh, should have been a phone call, at least a phone call.
At least, yeah.
And, uh, and, and, uh, you know, you receiving notice, you receiving notice and, and then the address is already changed. Uh, I do, I do agree with you and I, I, we've talked about cost and, and if it were me, I would, I would, I would be upset. So I've asked, I've asked folks to look at, uh, what, what are, what are our alternative, you know, what are, what are, what are our options? And, uh, we do have an ordinance that, um, is pretty specific in the, in the amount of space between addresses. It's, it's feet. I'm, I'm right on that, right? Uh, so it's feet, uh, like twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one point whatever feet between addresses. Uh, that, that is, that is an ordinance. Uh, so I have asked, I've asked them to go back and look at this. Uh, and see if there's anything at all that we can do, uh, to, to help you with this issue.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And I'm not telling you it's gonna happen, uh, but, but I, but I have, but we have been working on, um, and so that's, that's kind of where we're at.
And so you'll know the, the numbering of that street is not consistent in any way. You know, Subway's eleven thirty and I'm twelve twenty and there's three vacant lots between us. Um, you know, if you took the Bluff Street down to me and make that the twelve hundred block, you know, Chase and Charlie's is thirteen eighty-four. You cross the bridge, the first building is fifteen hundred. So you skip the fourteen hundred block. So as long as the consistency was remained, to me, that makes logic, uh, that it should not matter. That it's not in coordinates. Um, the problem lies in, in the thousands of dollars it's going to cost. And I would have to hire an employee. I mean, we're, we're a small business of ten employees and I don't have anybody with spare time to fix all this. And I for sure don't have the time. So, you know, it's gonna be an employee and all the, the other cost. And some of these things can't be fixed at this point. They're gonna be thrown out and redone.
Well, I, I'm certainly sympathetic to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Your issue and, uh, understand, understand where you're coming from and understand that, that the process was not, uh, the best. Uh, and, um, that, that's, that's concerning to me.
Right.
Um, and I, and I've, I've said that today, that, that, that is a concern to me. Um, because I do feel like people are, I feel like I, I come from a business where we, we would make phone calls.
Right.
And phone calls are important, uh, and, you know, even some people want to send emails, some people want to send texts. Uh, I still think it's better to pick up the phone and call somebody and have a conversation or, or go and see somebody. Uh, show up at the door and see them. Uh, that might not be possible, but you can pick up the phone and call somebody and say, look, here, here's the deal. This is why we're having to do this and, you know, you not be surprised. Um, you know, and, and I do get years ago when, when things were set into place that, that things probably, um, that there's, there's. There's some messes in some places, uh, come, when you, when you're dealing with addresses and, and what have you. Um, you know, and I, I know growing up, I, I grew up, my address was a route, was, you know, a route.
Right.
Then it changed. Then it changed to a road and then that number changed to accommodate nine one one. And so we had address changes several. Yeah, I know four times when I was growing up. Uh, and, and it does create issues. It creates issues for, you know, for residential. And I think this was more tailored, this was more tailored, what's happening right here was more, from, from my information today, was more directed at residential. But the city of Mount Airy adopted, adopted what we did. So I know you got, you had some communication with the city and the city kind of, you know, well, the city adopted it. It's not like they were told what to do. They adopted what Surrey County had put into place. Uh, so that's.
My understanding was in two thousand one that it was adopted as twelve twenty South Main. And nobody knows that there's been a change. Nothing, you know, changed for anybody that we knew of.
Yeah. And, and it could have, you know, uh, and again, we're gonna look into it and see, and see what, what the options are.
Okay.
And that's, that's where we're at right now. Uh, but, uh, you know, we do appreciate you coming and I appreciate your concern. And, and like I said, uh, it's, it's not something that I've taken life.
Well, I appreciate your help and any help will be appreciated.
He tried to contact me.
I had not, no. I left you out of it tonight, Larry.
She was waiting on a personal visit, Larry. If you'd have knocked on the door and say, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you.
Come take to the calls now and then down there.
I, I'll tell you a funny story about what they did to addresses to early two thousands and, and I'm eight forty-eight. Liberty School Roadway in the country in the middle of nowhere. An old lady lives, my next door neighbor lives way on Upper Road. And, uh, hers is like five hundred and something and she came down to my house and she says, Eddie, if they put three hundred and some houses between me and you, we're in trouble. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Collins, welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I'm Martin Collins, three three six seven one zero three six zero nine. As far as I know, I'm still, um, a county resident in good standing. Uh, and I'd like to talk on this a little bit. Um, I read your ordinance today. And that twenty-one feet or whatever, I couldn't make hide and hair of it. Eleven hundred block ends there at Bluff. What happened to the twelve hundred block? It disappeared. It disappeared. Uh, a vacant lot gets assigned a thirteen hundred number. Creative Designs all of a sudden becomes thirteen hundred. There's maybe nine hundred feet between Bluff Street and the river. Uh, this new block, better than five hundred feet long. Well, it's nowhere near five hundred feet from Bluff Street through those few lots. So, hey, where's that twelve hundred block? What happened to it? How did it disappear? I think you've already alluded to, well, there was a mistake. I'm not sure I understand what the mistake was. Because in two thousand and four, it's supposed to have been a thorough process. It was gone through to assign addresses. All of these addresses were in existence then. They were adopted. And then now, twenty years later roughly, uh, yeah, the business owner gets a letter that says your address has changed. Super disruptive. Um, you have the power to say, hey, let's do what's sensible here. Let's take what you said. It was a mistake. Let's just leave the mistake alone. You can still have a twelve hundred block. There's, it's consistent with what exists now. Eleven hundred, twelve hundred block. She's in a twelve hundred block, rather than eliminate the twelve hundred block. Oh, and now this business and the next business and the one above them becomes thirteen hundred. I don't know. It seems arbitrary. Um, y'all have the power to do what's right. This, with this business, just leave it alone, right? Hey, if y'all, the elected officials, won't speak for the businesses, who the heck is? If y'all won't protect them from arbitrary decision-making. That come out of ordinances and departments that you hate, here's the responsibility. If you won't protect them, who will? So, um, they might say today, you know, Martin's got a lot of passion for this. I would like to say have some enthusiasm for this because as a citizen, I kind of feel like. If we're going to be subject to rules and ordinances and laws and stuff, they should be easily understood by people like me. The business owner and everyone here. I can't understand it. Do you understand it? Do you understand why her address changed after twenty-seven years? Twenty years after that address was adopted as a part of a map? I don't understand it.
Don't understand. I, I, I saw it the first time about an hour and ten minutes ago, so. Uh, we've, we've got a, we've got a lot of stuff to work through here. Um, we, we just found, I just found out about it before the meet, so.
Uh, I heard about it this morning and, uh, so I spent about six hours wading through the ordinance. And, you know, I would think that, you know, after wading through the ordinance, I could figure out why it would be changing. I couldn't figure that out. So, you know, my, my request is just leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for open forum?
Hey, I'm Sandy Snow. As y'all know, Mark Willis, our Substance Abuse Recovery Director, is retiring December first. Uh, Jamie Edwards, who is the Assistant Director currently, has been hired to fill the position. And I'd like to ask Jamie to come up and officially meet you.
Just wanted to say thank you, um, for this opportunity. I'm honored to be here with each of you. Um, thank you for the county manager's office for, um, for the confidence as well. This is a, um, really interesting time. As many of you know, I started my professional experience upstairs in nineteen ninety-seven. So to be given the opportunity to return here to work on the same topic of substance use and, and other related issues as, um. Some might say irony, uh, I might say at the same time as it should be. So, um, thank you again and I look forward to being a part of the, um, the county family for a long, long time.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Jamie. We look forward to your continued employment with Surrey County. Anyone else for open forum? All right. We'll close the open forum and we'll get right into business. Mr. Marty Needham. Developmental Services Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll try to speak up. My voice is a little crack, crackly tonight. Um, we're here to hear case number Z C R one, two, three, one. The applicant's name is Kurt Lawson. This is a proposal. It's a request for conditional zoning to allow for a building to be constructed for the applicant's refrigeration business. Current zoning on the property is R A. The proposed zoning is H B C, highway business conditional. Property is an open area of low to medium residential density along with highway business uses within proximity. The property has direct road frontage on North Andy Griffith Parkway. Property is within the rural growth area of the twenty forty land use plan. Staff communicated via phone and in person with the applicant. The T R C committee reviewed the project and has made recommendation to the planning board. Conditional zoning was recommended as the best approach for this request. The planning board heard the case on October ninth and recommended approval. And staff will present facts and answer any questions from the board during the hearing. Um, in your package, you had a, a checklist of consistency statement. And that was kind of what we followed the last time we were here for rezoning that Howard. And that was kind of what we followed the last time we were here for rezoning that Howard, our attorney presented to you. That's just a, a way to get in the habit of discussion about the rezoning. And one sixty D does not require us to formally answer each of those questions. If after discussion, the board believes the request is consistent with the land use plan and in the best interest of the community, then the request can be approved. Howard and I have drafted an abbreviated version of these questions similar to the last rezoning. That Commissioner Harris signed. I put that in front of you right before the meeting started. You also noted on that abbreviated version that the planning board added conditions that the owner verbally agreed to orally. They stated he would do so in writing as well. If you're in agreement with this consistency and reasonable statement, Commissioner Harris can sign the agreement after you've discussed the matter and talked to the owner.
All right, gentlemen, we have a rezoning tonight. And I am not finding my. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Tucker. We have a conditional rezoning tonight. The, um, new process that we have developed, um, um, will be applicable to this. And this must be consistent with the, um, with the land use twenty forty plan. Um, there's three things that we have to determine. The reasonable, is it reasonableness and the consistency? And is it in the public interest? Uh, it is going from RA to HB. And, um, so I'm going to, um, open this up for discussion tonight. And this is, uh, the applicant, Mr. Kirk Lawson, uh, the case number ZCR one, two, three, one. And it is a conditional rezoning. Anyone like to, uh, address this?
Public hearing?
Go to the public hearing first. Okay. All right. Yes, I'll open the, the public hearing formally at this point in time. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to this rezoning, please do so at this time. Come forward and state your name and your telephone number.
Mitchell Long, four, six, nine, two, seven, one, one, Erica, three, three, six. We have some property that joins that and I was just wanting to know what the intentions were before they rezoned it. Uh, I've been on vacation. We just received the letter right before I went on vacation. So I just want to know what they're doing.
Okay. And I'll get the developmental services director to address that here. Uh, you want to, you want me to finish with the public hearing, Marty, before you go through? All right. Yep. And if you need to come back up, I'll let you come back up. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Kurt Lawson, the owner of Salem Refrigeration. Uh, phone number's three, three, six, three, two, six, seven, two, seven, one. Returned back into Surrey County when I got out of the Air Force in nineteen ninety. Had a couple of jobs working at Reynolds Truck Stop and then I wanted to work at Cross Creek Apparel. Come in one day and I stuck up that Big Mexico sign on the walls and all of us there were like, what are we going to do for a job? Go back to being an auto mechanic if we wanted to, but I was lucky enough to fall in to refrigeration, heating and air conditioning and I love it. So all raising my kids, I had two go from Franklin all the way up to North Surrey High School and, uh, one of them's back now and the other one's getting ready to come back soon as she finishes law school. Everything is great. That's where I want to stay, uh, with our business and our current business is on the south end of, uh, the town, uh, where the caution light is just past south of Big Lots. If you've ever been into that intersection, it is deadly. I have been hit there once. My brother-in-law, uh, works for me, or my sister-in-law come to pick up my brother who works for me and she got hit there. There's multiple wrecks all the time. We're like, get us out of this place. Talking to Mark Rogers, he found us this property at some north end of fifty-two is quiet. Uh, my brother and my wife and I got out there and she said, listen to that. You hear that? I'm like, what are you talking about? She said, birds. There's not all the craziness. Uh, what we're doing is taking the lot that's not being used and go level it out on one section of it, put a concrete pad in the middle building, the three of us in the office, uh, eight to five Monday through Friday. The rest of the building is going to be for, we buy and sell, uh, equipment, coolers and freezers and ice machines. We don't do any loud business, any loud work. Anything we do is going to be inside that building. Uh, may on the outside of it loading or unloading, but we are, you know, like I say, eight to five Monday through Friday, no weekends. Uh, it's going to be a nice metal building, but it is kind of colored up to the houses. There's a house on the corner from us. And we thought, well, hey, we do everything we can to kind of blend in with that, plus build up, uh, put up trees and everything on one side of it to keep oil blind and everything away from everything. Kind of blend into the county and stay in the county and be a good part of it. And that's really what we intend on doing. And like I say, it's, it's not a loud business. Uh, my wife brings her two little shih-tzus with her every day. So, uh, that's going to be the loudest thing and they're going to be inside the building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Mark Rogers, Rogers Realty, three, three, six, four, oh, nine, two, two, seven, two. Uh, just respectfully request you to support the planning board's recommendation. They've studied it thoroughly, thoroughly and thoroughly. And Marty and Steph have done a great job and Mr. Lawson's been backing forth and submitted all the requirements in the site plans and changed them and spent time and money and energy because he needs a place to continue to grow and operate his business in our county. So I just ask you to take action tonight, if you will, please. Favorable action. Uh, we started mid-March and so in a couple of days it'll be seven months. So hopefully it's time to get that out there where he can dick and put a shovel on the ground and start this construction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to say to the board, my answer was answered just now. And I think that is awesome. Uh, I've been on vacation, had surgery out before that. So I wasn't able, when I got the letter was right before we went on vacation. And, uh, I wish Mr. Lawson the best in his business and it sounds like a good idea to move forward. And, uh, it sounds like a real good idea in the plan.
Which town do you live in?
Actually, I attend Trivine Baptist Church right beside the property and we just didn't know what was going on and I just come to find out. And, uh, I've been in favor of it. It sounds like a, a good plan to follow. So, thank you.
Mr. Long, and there is a, uh, this is a conditional rezoning and, uh, Mr. Lawson has, um, agreed to several serious stipulations in this rezoning that, uh, will make it more amenable and, uh, to the adjoining landowners in the neighborhood and stuff. So, yeah, and, and we'll read those out in a minute.
I think that's good.
Thank you, sir. Any more folks for, um, the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on the rezoning case ZCR one, two, three, one. And gentlemen, I'll open this up for discussion.
Say anyone who likes to continue and grow their business in Surrey County is a wonderful, good legitimate business. Uh, sounds like Mr. Lawson's been a good citizen all these years and, and raised his kids, went to, like he said, Franklin, Gentry, North Surrey and, uh, uh, wanted to come back home, stay in the county and, and do his business. So I'm, I think it's a great, great idea.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Tucker?
Thanks. Sounds like a great idea. And you know, we got to keep wheels turning in Surrey County. We got to be careful how we make them turn. And we want to do things that's, that's blend, blends in with the community and we want to follow our land use plan. And with that, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of questions I'd like to know about the process of the planning board. So if you will, I'd like to ask Mr. Needham to come back to the microphone. Uh, Mr. Needham, uh, was the planning board discussion well attended and was there anybody that showed up at the planning board? Um, meetings or hearings that, uh, was in opposition to this?
There was one gentleman that showed up, was concerned about the buffering behind his property. He was a little further up the street. I think during the meeting, he talked to Mr. Lawson and realized that he has plenty of buffering behind him. I think Mr. Lawson even offered to sell him what was back there if he wanted it. And I think once he talked to him, he was fine with it.
Was the, uh, board in agreement?
Yes, sir.
In their decision?
Yeah, unanimous.
Unanimous decision. Okay. That's all from me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you have anything?
I'm happy.
Okay. Um, and as in a previous change, um, the, there is no need for a consistency statement because it will be included in the motion to approve. So I don't need two separate motions on this, but I will need the consistency, um, and reasonable statement read in conjunction with the motion to approve. I don't have anything to add to this either. Um, it looks like a pretty straightforward, uh, proposition to me and, um, and I'm looking for a motion and if you would read the consistency statement in, in, in with the approval. So.
Make a motion that, uh, case number ZCR one, two, three, one, petition for general rezoning, uh, by owner Kurt Lawson. Um, from rural agricultural RA, the highway business conditional, proposed zoning map amendment to change the zoning of this parcel from RA to HBC with additional conditions that no outside storage at the front or sides of building except, except a dumpster. No further additions to the building which would exceed twenty percent of the size of the building as depicted on the site plan. Vegetative buffer as depicted on the site plan will only be altered as reasonably necessary for septic well in ingress and egress. It's consistent with the Surrey County Land Use Plan twenty forty and is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendment, this area is designated as a rural growth area in the land use plan twenty forty. Issues permitted would be similar to other commercial uses on Highway fifty-two and the surrounding areas. This would encourage mixed use development in an appropriate way, which would be, uh, compatible with the surrounding areas. The application would encourage suitable economic development and attendant jobs and increase the tax base in a way that is appropriate and compatible with the surrounding parcels and areas.
Okay, gentlemen, I have a motion, Commissioner Goins. I have a second, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All those in favor in approval of the rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, Mr. Eric Southern, EMS Director. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, Penny, uh, I've, uh, put you in the back. Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mark.
You can skip me.
Yeah, I was, I was about to skip you, Penny. I'm sorry about that.
So the first thing I need to, uh, request in your packet or to discuss is the debt set off. We are planning to mail out the debt set off letters in January of twenty twenty-four after they become delinquent. And then we'll send the file to the clearinghouse in March of twenty twenty-four. It is where the the file is sent to the clearinghouse where we will collect from the state. And there will be a twenty dollar fee, which will be fifteen dollars from the clearinghouse and a five dollar fee from the Department of Revenue. And this is done annually if board approved.
Penny, we, this, and I, I, I know I probably asked this last year, but I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Bear with, th- this avoids the, I know we had a, uh, glitch one year. Do you remember that?
We, we mailed them out in thank, around Thanksgiving one year. This right here is delaying it.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that and I promise I won't ask that again.
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah. Okay, you're looking for, you need a motion for this as well.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion that, uh, we, uh, allow, uh, the debt send off letters to, uh, be sent to taxpayers on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four as proposed by Penny Harrison, the tax administrator.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Goins. I'll have a second. Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. And then the next thing I want to touch you about are, uh, sending some accounts to the Kenya Law Firm for foreclosure. I've given you a packet of several accounts. They, they are delinquent. They are over five years old with delinquent taxes. I included a map and the amount that is due along with the parcel number and the address. So is there any questions you would like for me to answer?
On, these are five years old or older?
Yes, sir.
Would you remind us of the state statute that after, how many years is it we cannot even collect taxes if we don't collect them in? We've got how many?
Ten years.
Ten years. And were there five years, these all that you presented here tonight in this booklet are five years into the ten years that we have, we have five years yet to recover. And after that, we can't recover these taxes statutorily. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All these people's been sent numerous, numerous letters, these heirs, these people that are attached to these, uh, estates. And, uh, how long would you say these five year, these people that are in the fi- fifth year of no taxes or delinquent taxes, no payment on taxes? How, how many times are they notified? Is it annually? Have they been notified every year for five years or multiple times every year?
It's been multiple times because the ladies work the accounts over and over and over trying to find bank accounts. Um, they're automatically, they see it at the, at the clearinghouse after they're sent to them every year. So they sit there unpaid until they are paid. Um, but it's, it's every year they're working these delinquent accounts because I'm charged with delinquent taxes every year. They're still, you know, working on even, even after they're sent to Kenya. If something comes up where they, you know, can find a bank account, we'll notify Kenya. I mean, foreclosure is the last thing we want to do. Absolute last.
Our absolute, our absolute last option.
Yes.
I'd just like to say as many times as, uh, we talk about the good taxpaying citizens of Surrey County and how we appreciate them, they pay with like a ninety-nine percent efficiency. It's that other one percent we don't often talk about, or a little less than one percent, but, but you know, the, the law is the law and taxes have to be paid and it's not fair to the ninety-nine percent that do pay the taxes and make the wheels go around for, for, for those people that have a, have property that's worth something that pay nothing. And they, they don't pay it and we don't, it's unpleasant and this board doesn't like the taste of it. And it's one of the least uh, lovely things that I participated in as long as I've been a commissioner, but time comes when you have to pay your taxes and that's our obligation to see that citizens not only get bragged on when they do pay them, but uh, those few times that those few don't pay them, we have to talk about and address those issues too. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm for, and we can talk about this all night, but I'm for mailing them out.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, you have anything?
No, it's, uh, looks like, uh, fifty-two property owners will be getting some type of, whether they throw it away or whatever, but we, we, we turn it over as our last resort.
Yeah, they will try to collect it before it is for, you know, foreclosure.
Right.
Sometimes foreclosure stimulates payment.
Yes.
Um, Penny, um, and the ones that aren't settled, uh, signs will go up on those properties. Is that correct?
Yes, they send me all the pictures. I have all of them. Yes, they send me all the pictures, I have all of them saved that we've sold. They notify me when they're going out to post the signs. I site visit every one of them.
Okay. Um, and there will be notification of adjoining landowners, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had some to come to the office last week of around and surrounding owners.
Yeah. Uh, and I want to compliment you on your presentation of these. Uh, it makes it easy to understand. It makes it easy to work through because we have lots of information to sort through. And this is really simple and easy to sort through these maps and the numbers and the documentation. And I want to congratulate you and your staff on this presentation here, and it is very, uh, well received.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for action.
Chairman, I'll make the motion that, uh, we allow Penny Harrison, our tax administrator, to request, her request and let her, allow her to send these accounts to the Kenya Law Firm, which is the third party law group that we contract with to try to collect these unpaid taxes.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker, to, uh, foreclose on 52 properties. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those who, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Eric Southern.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, last month I had the opportunity to come and talk to you about these lift assist fees that we had, uh, had some voice on. Um, and that opened the discussion up, that seemed to open some more questions up. And I took those back, tried to get answers to those questions, tried to compile some data and some information for you and found out it wasn't really that easy. There seems to be a whole lot of discussion about this that's going on nationwide, different states, different agencies, different county services. How are they are looking at it? How are they tackling it? What they're doing to try to help reduce the number of these calls? Uh, and I compiled some of that information for you. I was able to talk to some of the counties that surrounding us. Uh, I'll note that Stokes County was the one I had talked to. Uh, they are in discussions now, they do not currently have a lift assist fee that their EMS charges. Uh, but they do have their volunteer fire departments that do have personnel that are available to respond. Uh, talked to, uh, Mr. Keith Vestal at Yatkin County, uh, what they were doing. Uh, they are relying on their fire departments to respond to these calls, but they do charge a fee for their services. And what they have found out here lately was that most of the time people would call 911, they would just request the fire department to come out because they knew they would come out and not charge them. Uh, another place that's worth noting is Guilford County. Uh, Guilford County had staffing issues with their EMS, so they got really creative about how they were going to respond to their calls. They actually created a whole separate, I think it's called Adult Welfare Services, that when these calls come in, they refer them to them. So everybody has a little bit of different take on this, but the one thing that they do all agree is that the numbers are increasing and that the costs associated with them also are increasing. So.
So Eric, uh, refresh my memory, how, how many, um, calls did you all have, was it 500 sum up to this point?
We're at 575 for the year so far.
Okay, how many calls do you anticipate that you'll have this year?
If we look at the projections, it's going probably close to 900 or over. Based on previous.
So.
And how many was that, refresh my memory, seven years ago, five years ago?
Hundred and some.
Hundred and something.
Hundred and.
About nine times as many?
2015, uh, our compliance officer started collecting this data and it was 111.
Yeah.
Yep.
So if we charged, let's say we had 900, let's see, let's just, if we had, if we did it like Yatkin County, they charged 50 bucks first time. I think that's what the, the.
Yes, they charge each time.
Yeah, 50 dollars. Um, the, so that'd be $45,000 if we had, um, you know, 900 calls in Surrey County.
Yes, sir.
Um, th- th- how many, how many of these calls would you say lead to a, um, transport to a hospital or some other medical?
Probably on around 40%.
40%. So if we back out, well, let's just say it's 50, backed out. So they would, they would still get the $50 fee, is that, is that what I'm hearing? That they would still, well, hypothetically, if we did charge $50 like Yatkin does, so, um, and we had 900 calls and it's $50 fee and it's $45,000 a year and the, the ones that were transported somewhere else, do they still get the $50 fee?
No, sir.
So then you'd have to back out half of that number. So you're only, you're probably talking about 20 some thousand dollars if, if we charge $50 and only half of those people get transported somewhere else. So.
I believe there's, wasn't there a couple of freebies in there before you started charging?
So currently, there's only one other county out there that was doing the same thing as us and that's Rockingham County. And they follow the same schedule that we were following. So we'll go out there twice and upon the third time, that's whenever they get that charge, that's $75. And Rockingham was the same price.
No, it's one time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that it also says even, even at that, uh, first two times is free and third time you're going to charge, but you're only getting 20% payment.
Right.
Okay.
So that would, so that would, that gets it down to almost.
That's the reason we're, that's the reason some counties don't even respond.
Right, and i- it's also worth noting, I just found this information out today. Um, and we knew that it was coming, uh, towards the end of the year, it's going to change. CMS had changed some of their rules about how we're going to be able to bill and recoup. So that's actually going to affect us probably going into next year. Right now, we can't charge Medicare, Medicaid does not pay, you know, for these services. Private insurance is only a select few are actually paying for these services. So most of the time, these charges, the citizen's paying for it.
But Eric, if I understood right, according to A at our lawyer, uh, we, we don't even have, we don't even have a policy, a set policy.
We do not.
We, we've just been doing this of the goodness of our heart.
Yes, sir.
And I thought, I thought he even said that we didn't even have a right to charge or whatever. I mean, unless we have a, so I, I figure that's the reason we're back again tonight.
We are, just, just to get this information to you so we can have this discussion on it.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Southern?
So the first recommendation is you have a draft policy that, uh, in your package. And I would say let's, uh, if we want to continue with the charge, continue with what it's set up as it currently is, that's what's put in the policy. So we would respond just like it has been. Uh, if we go to that address on the third time, that's whenever they would receive this $75 charge.
So you're suggesting we go two times and charge nothing?
No, I'm sorry, uh.
That's what we did.
Yeah, what we're doing now, yes, I would, I would.
Recommendation is we, we start charging.
That would be my first recommendation and what I would follow up with next, um, give us one year, let's get some data. Uh, one of the new services that we've got is our NIH medics. Uh, they are actually working through a grant with the substance abuse to the state. Uh, and whenever they're not on those particular calls, they've actually started working with some own home education, helping people and things like that. We've sent them to a total of five calls so far, they've actually had some success with that. We're still working with DSS, we referred a total of 26 calls to DSS this year alone. So if we could kind of take those numbers and see if this is going to make a difference, if it's going to change it, if it's going to reduce the number, I'd kind of like to see that.
And what is, what are you doing when you make that referral, DSS? Are they actually responding or, I mean, they, are they going out and educating these folks and telling them what to do henceforth? Or what do you, how's DSS handle one of your referrals?
They are, a lot of times DSS is already familiar with the, the particular client. So they already do have a case file or they've already talked to them in the past. If it's somebody new, DSS has been, they have been going out and talking to them, making recommendations like improvements they can do at their home to prevent the files.
Yeah.
So you're, but we are looking, I mean, up for consideration is the passage of the policy tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yes, even without any sort of consideration as to a fee or?
Right, because we've, we've never been able to find anything.
Anything.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. Well, gentlemen, do you folks, um, do you folks want to, um, let's, I'll tell you what, let's, my recommendation here is going to be to, um, let's, let's do a little bit more legwork on this. And let's kick this can down the road here, another meeting or two. And, uh, I think we probably need to talk to, um, you know, some, some of the stakeholders here in the county, uh, in county government and, um, um, and digest this a bit more, uh, you know, when you adopt official county policy.
Yep.
You know, it's serious business and, uh, but yes, thank you, uh, and now your presentation is, is very, very good. Uh, this was very well laid out, so even someone as, uh, elementary as myself could understand it. Uh, thank you very much, Eric. Uh, gentlemen, you all have any more questions?
I'd like to compliment on the summary, especially the last paragraph. Uh, you, you got to, y'all have to prioritize things.
Yes, sir.
And that's important and it even says here, your last sentence, a timely response is not a guarantee.
Right.
These types of things.
Right. And, and that, and that's also worth noting, it's, you know, originally whenever I come and talked, you know, at the first meeting, that was one of the things I said, is I kind of threw the idea out about doing away with the assist fee because I was worried about those citizens that just wouldn't call us if they need us. Unfortunately, we have to look differently and we do have some people that are coming up with some really good ideas like our NIH medics. So they are wanting to help, we have ways we could do it, but.
Just, just the, the worst example, I think you said that one citizen called you how many times in one day?
Uh, we had 17 in a month and in one day, we've had a total, I think the most was five times, five times in one day.
Five times in one day.
Yep.
Which turns our EMS service into something more than an emergency service operation, which means somebody else takes second priority when they are having an emergency.
Yes, sir, and we've had those, those cases that have happened like that.
Could actually cost somebody their life, I imagine.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't it? Yeah. So it's. Yes.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, so, yeah. Okay.
Do turn it upside.
All right, Mr. Jamie Edwards. And your protege, or is it a colleague?
Colleague.
Colleague.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I'm really excited to be here with you tonight to share with you, um, a, a new grant that came to the county. Um, that's actually being awarded, um, to Surrey Friends of Youth. Since 1970, is it 1976? 1976, Surrey Friends of Youth has, um, provided prevention and intervention services to ant risk using their families. Um, if you do the math, 1976, that's a pretty good track record, um, that most nonprofits could only hope to emulate. Within your packets itself, um, there's a memo dated October 16th that outlines the Drug Free Communities Grant. We frequently call, um, Drug Free Communities, DFC for short. This grant, um, has some singular purposes. It's to impair local nonprofits to assist coalitions. Our coalition is the All-Stars Prevention Coalition that you heard from today with federal funding, um, to help sustain their work, but to also reduce alcohol use, tobacco use and marijuana use with youth, particularly ages 12 to 18. This grant is somewhat unique, it's five years. With another, the potential for another 10, five years, that's a total of 10 years. In the grant world, that's somewhat unusual, if not only, almost impossible. Um, 20% of this nation is covered by DFC grant. We now belong to that 20%. So it is truly the gold standard of prevention work. Within your packet as well, you, you do have a, a short description and, um, some, some goals for the grant itself. Those goals are truly driven by federal priorities, uh, for all communities. You'll, you will also see some of the, um, expected reductions in alcohol use, um, nicotine use, marijuana use. Um, after Tamara and her staff built some momentum, this is a five-year effort that will again, uh, provide Tamara's staff funding, um, that will actually, um, assist and enhance the work of our community outreach coordinator, Charlotte Reeves. Charlotte has been by herself until now. Um, she will have a colleague in the community, speaking the same prevention language, working on the same priorities uh, and familiaring the same ideas, um, that we do within the Substance Use Office. But now we have a community partner to do the same. Um, the funding, uh, uh, DFCs are funded at $125,000 per year. So for the five-year cycle, that's $625,000. Um, that again is, is a, a new source of funding for the Friends of Youth. That traditionally, um, in past years, found itself as a leader in prevention work in this community. It has somewhat, I think Tamara will agree, reignited its passion for prevention, especially substance use prevention, especially with youth, which is really, really hard, um, to find success with. Um, we'll be happy to entertain any, any questions the board has. And Tamara has a few words as, as well, related to the Friends of Youth and, and kind of how we, we, we talked to this forum. DFC grants are somewhat difficult to obtain and one of the reasons we were eligible, Surrey County was eligible, was because of the needs assessment and data work that the county office has put forth the past five years. Without that work, we would not be part of the 20%. We would be part of the 80%. And, um, kudos to Mr. Rilis and our office for willing to invest in, in data and research as we have the past five years.
A question, uh, Mr. Eric was, uh, the biggest part of the DFC grant, $125,000, do you project that to be used on employment?
Um.
Or how would you categorize, where do you expect that $125,000 to be spent?
That includes, um, staff support, materials, supplies. We have a required federal partner that serves as a evaluator to evaluate the, the work product for the next five years and to, um, to build a better data set for the, um, um, usage patterns of our youth. Currently, we are reliant on federal data, um, to determine how much our youth are using, especially with an alcohol, nicotine and vaping and marijuana. We believe in part of the DFC grant is to build a local, local data sets. So we're not comparing our, our data with someone in Montana or California. We'll be, um, implementing and developing local data, that's a significant cost.
You're talking about employing people, somebody, someone, some few to do that, a couple of people to do that, yeah. And where I was going with that is, and I certainly applaud you for that, and yes, it's a grant that I think wonderful that we could put to, to use here in Surrey County. I think what we see sometimes as a board is we're quick to jump onto these grants. And then when they do, they do involve employment, then sometimes when the grant money runs out, you know, it's almost like you can never go back. Oh, surely you can't take this back, I mean, we know everybody'd hire it and have the grant fund to help pay you. So I just was simply for discussion saying, uh, I always like to know if these grant funds are employing people because it someday that'll have to be reviewed again. And in this case, fortunately, it's going to be a long grant, but a lot of these grants, a long-term grant, a lot of these grants are six-month grants, 12-month grants, 18-month grants, I mean, but I just was going to, uh, I was just curious as to if that was going to put people in permanent employment with that $125,000 a year. And the answer is yes, probably.
The answer is yes, hopefully over an extremely long period of time.
I understand.
But your, and your target audience is going to be the public schools though, is that correct?
Hmm, public schools and, and youth in all settings.
Okay, youth in all settings and the public schools, okay. And 12 to 18, is that what I heard?
Hmm.
12 to 18.
Hmm.
Okay. Well, good, maybe.
Maybe you reach some folks.
Reach some, so. Reach some, so folks before they say, and I'm sure you have something to add to this, yeah. All right, yeah.
On page two of the memo, under goal, um, to objective. So, I don't know how my glasses are. There, there is a goal that indicates if we reduce, um, youth substance use, we will in turn reduce adult substance use. If we did not address youth substance use, we will most assuredly continue the pattern of increased adult use.
Well, it's a noble task.
Thank, thank you, uh, Commissioner so much. You guys know how excited I get. And I have a board meeting waiting on me right now, so I won't ramble for two hours or anything. But I have to tell you how very thankful we are. This is another opportunity to help our community without even asking for local commissioner dollars, which is awesome to me. You guys remember me presenting when we were kicking off a new federal grant that has been providing mentoring, substance use prevention classes, intensive man, mentoring and case management with juvenile justice and involved youth. Since then, we've also started diverting kids away from the system with, working directly with school resource officers. And it's been amazing. And, I mean, just with the direct services of these programs, we've served thirty-some. If we want to count all the screening we have done, we are hitting close to a hundred in this little short time. And I know that grant's actually being extended longer, but one of the most important things, I want to give big thanks to Surrey County Office of Substance Abuse Recovery. When we wrote that grant, that was sixteen in the nation. We could not have done that without the data and research that SCOSAR had done locally. That is how we won a grant that only sixteen in the nation had gotten. Since then too, we've seen increases in youth violence. We started writing more grants using the same data. Would you believe that sometimes when kid loses their adult parents to substance use, maybe they get angry? Well, it's led to increases in youth violence as far as we've seen. So we're also getting awarded a grant that's only one of ten in the state of North Carolina. So I'm super, super excited. Um, you guys know me, I'm used to working with really heavy tough kids in the system. So to me, this is a little bit new, reaching out and doing more prevention um, before they get to that, but I've been blown away. I've been working with All-Stars a couple of years. Last year in one week in red ribbon alone, just providing public education, we reached more than two thousand five hundred kids. With the swag and cute things like Melissa had earlier, they reached more than ten thousand kids. Now, if out of that twenty-five hundred kids, even twenty get a seed planted there that so two years later or the next week, when they're offered honestly to get high, they choose to turn it down, then it's worth it. That's ten kids. I'm not going to meet in juvenile justice in twenty thirty-three. So, any questions for us, guys?
You enjoy going to work.
I do. I'm tired, but, and it is, it's stressful. That's another reason we started to look at prevention and change in the landscape because all of our counselors are working with kids. We give them these positive environments, these positive education, positive mentors that take them out. And honestly, sometimes they're going right back into those same family dynamics, those same cycles where the odds are against us and we feel like we're spinning our wheels. We want to see things look different when these young ones ten years down the road are the older, the adults. We want to slow down the EMS runs. We want to slow down all these things and we have to hit them younger. It's just that simple, so.
Thank you for your passion for what you do and Jamie, I guess this, uh, grant, uh, I guess that's your specialty, Dad. Right? Uh, so that come in handy. So, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do and, and you're right, if you can reach one or two kids out of a hundred, it's worth it. So, thank you.
So Tamara, where, where do you live?
Actually, I live right across the line in Cana, but I've worked in Surrey County for three decades. Starting with homeless shelters, domestic violence shelters, and now juvenile justice for the last twelve years, so.
All this is Surrey County, Surrey County, Surrey County. So I imagine you're going to spend part of it over my, my end of the neighborhood, my, my end of the county, aren't you?
Absolutely. We're working with the school system down there to do a school safety event next week.
Well, good.
Speaking of youth violence, and we've started teaching anger management to even the little ones.
Sometimes I wonder, I, I think Elkin, people may think it's in Yadkin or Willes County or something. You know, it's, it's kind of stuck down there. I want to make sure that, that Elkin gets, you know, they're sharing the resources.
Clear. I'm not genius enough to write the grants like a Jamie is, but the Tammy that does our grant work, she's an Elkin too.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. And, and again, welcome, welcome to your new position. We delighted to have you. Is Ed with us tonight, Chris? Sandy, you doing? Yeah, okay.
Ed had a family situation coming up out of town, so Sandy's going to stand in for him here.
We received the, uh, litter contract back a little while ago and we have not had a chance to review it with Mr. Woltz or even review it with ourselves yet. So we would like to wait and bring this back next meeting. Uh, Mr. Puckett's brought his copy into us. He signed it. He's ready to go. We just have to finish our end of it and finalize it with you all.
We need an extension on the existing.
At the last meeting, you gave us till November sixth.
Okay, till the sixth, okay. All right, still no extension.
Yes, sir.
All right, good enough. Just bring it back next time.
Thank you.
That's all of the regular agenda. There is the inmate medical services under county commissioner time for you, Mr. Chairman, uh, to move forward as you see fit. There's some staff here too to assist you there. I will mention that following, uh, general county business, uh, we do have a request for closed session for economic development. Mr. Moyer's here and personnel. With that inmate medical services, you have a memo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for my memo here. I've got many. Okay, yeah, I found it. Yeah, good. All right, you, this was in the packet, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, and this, um, is in regards to the, um, county inmate health services, um, the they can, as I spoke with you all privately on a one-on-one individual basis over the last few weeks, um, it seemed to be the consensus, uh, that, um, that we needed a little more, um, amenable timeline to get this done. Um, it is very complicated. Um, there's been multiple meetings with Denise Brown, um, Samantha Ainge, who has a, a stake in this, um, under general statute law. Um, Sandy, Chris, uh, myself, um, Laura McNeely, um, and the county has been, um, very diligent in makes, making sure and Ed Woltz as well to, that we get the, uh, time, that the, uh, all the I's dotted and T's crossed. So, um, Southern Health Partners, partners under the existing contract that we have now, they have agreed to a six-month contract. That's all they would agree to is a six-month extension. Um, so basically, the most logical course of action is to, in my estimation, is to run the, uh, uh, and this seemed to be the consensus of, uh, the folks in the meeting as well as Commissioner Tucker, um, in the finance committee meeting, that, um, it just worked better to do it with the fiscal year, uh, ending on June thirtieth. And you can see a timeline down there. Um, I want to say too, I think, um, as far as the RFP uh, goes, that, um, that I think this allows, um, anyone who is interested in, uh, putting together an RFP for, to provide inmate health services for the Surrey County Detention Center. Uh, this gives them a better timeline to do that. Um, I know there's several folks. There was one, uh, gentleman here locally who was interested in, um, um, providing, uh, the health, uh, jail inmate health services. And, uh, it's my understanding that, um, uh, well, it is, it is a, a lengthy process and complicated process for someone that's wanting to do an RFP that has never done one before. It is really, uh, seriously, uh, complicated. Uh, so this may, uh, work into, uh, those folks' favor as well. Obviously, there's players that are interested in jail health that, um, are very familiar with this process. Um, I, uh, Commissioner Tucker and I met with the sheriff, um, and Chief Deputy Larry Lowe on this. Um, the, um, uh, sheriff at that time told us that, um, uh, if, you know, if we, the timeline was obviously up to the Board of County Commissioners and, um, and he would not object to a, um, um, an extension and a timeline. Um, obviously, I know, um, uh, there's been a lot of back and forth on that. But that's about, uh, is, like the memo says, it gets the contract back on a fiscal year basis. Um, gives us time to get moved into a new facility, which probably isn't going to happen towards sometime. I think Thanksgiving would be optimistic. Lieutenant Shelton's here tonight. He may, um, and of course, we've had, um, a meeting prior to the finance committee, a property committee meeting today on, uh, the state inspection for the new detention facility. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, and in my opinion, haste makes waste. We have no timeline. It is our timeline. Um, and, uh, in my meeting, um, uh, I think that the, the sheriff's department was working, uh, fairly well at this point in time with, uh, Southern Health Partners. Um, and they have agreed to give us a six-month extension under the contract. Uh, Commissioner Tucker, since you are on the, uh, committee with me on that, um, um, I'll let you, uh, speak first if you want to add anything else, and then the rest of the board members can weigh in and have their say, um, and we'll proceed.
Well, I'll just say that, uh, for the, several reasons. First and foremost, you've mentioned them all, then we are currently doing a jail health program with Southern and we are still in the transition phase of going from an old jail to a new jail. Um, you know, if it's working right now, if it's not broke, we don't want to try to fix it between now and December thirty-first. No other incentive here except for a couple of more. Uh, the process for the RFP is complex, and I will say, and, uh, as, as exploring this on the finance committee, uh, conferring with Sandy and Chris and Denise and Laura and all the Samantha Ainge and the powers that be that are signed according to the North Carolina General Statute to all examine this, we all are stakeholders here. Uh, we've not been quite up to snuff on what our former and prior, uh, RFPs have been. Uh, it's a little bit more complicated than we have been used to, uh, making notice of what services we want and what we want to be quote-priced. Uh, it's, it's taken a little bit more time on behalf of some of these stakeholders to really sit down and put their heads together and determine what it is exactly that we're going to ask for in the new, uh, proposal and the new contract. And we didn't think it excluded anyone that may or may not have an interest in it for giving them a little bit more time because it gives everybody, actually that, just a little bit more time. Southern probably doesn't need more time with those that's vying, those others that may be vying to, to contract instead of, or in, in place of Southern may need a little more time. Um, for all those reasons, uh, the transition of the jail, the complexity of the, um, RFP, the education process that, uh, we've all discovered that, uh, for all of us is a little bit more complex than we have been used to doing our business with on getting this RFP. We want to get it right. We want to make sure that we are buying or proposing, that, that the vendors are proposing the things it is that we need. And so we felt like, uh, you know, here it is, uh, past the middle of October and, uh, December thirty-first coming real quick. I mean, like really, really quick. Have you ever noticed how time speeds up between October and about Christmas? I mean, it's, it's, uh, time you put in a few holidays and you're off a couple of weekends. It's, it gets here really quickly. Uh, for those reasons, then the next target became tied it in with the fiscal year for just general good easy way of making it all on the next budget and the next budget vote and the next budget process. No other reason that I'm aware of that we suggested doing that, but as a finance member, I did come to the conclusion that was probably made more sense. It was probably better business and I supported that. And I'm here tonight to say publicly why I supported it. And yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I am in support of this, uh, extension of the contract.
All right. Anyone else want to weigh in on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, uh, I want to speak for Surrey County and I've shared it with you before. Uh, in fact, when you had, told me there's going to be a, some delay in this. Uh, I, my, my situation is probably just me. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, there's not enough, uh, communication with what's going on. Uh, and you're as chairman, I ain't saying it has to come directly from you, but I had to ask, I had to ask my county manager, what is this? Uh, and he explained it to me just a little bit, made me feel a lot better about it, and I understand it. And I, and I do support, I will support this. Uh, it's going to take, uh, he explained it takes this long for these things and all these things to happen, but, uh, I, I would appreciate, for me, uh, a little more understanding. Um, I don't know how else to say it, uh, because I, uh, I, I don't know, I didn't understand the, the way the things are. I, I very rarely hear anything other than when we sit here about the finance and the property meetings that are being held. And, uh, I, I ain't saying I feel left out, but I just feel like I have a vote and I would like to be, uh, you know, I need to be informed as best I can to make a good, to make a good choice. And, uh, so, but as far as relating to this, uh, this, uh, inmate health services, I, I will support this, uh, uh, this and knowing it's going to take, uh, everybody involved, it, it is a lot to it to get it all right. And as, as has been said, it wasn't exactly right in the past, so, and we're still delayed on moving and they're telling when that happened. So, but anyway, I want to share that with you. I feel like, uh, I wished I could have more information when needed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. So noted. Anyone else? All right, I will say that in this process, um, and you could ask the county staff this, uh, you can ask everyone in the meetings, going back months and months or every how long we started this, that when this process was over, I did not want anyone to be able to say that they were left out of the process as far as information, as far as knowledge, as far as anything. Because that is, uh, was my goal, and I have said that time and time and time again. And I appreciate your, um, comments there, Commissioner Johnson, and, uh, we'll try to, um, uh, make a better effort from now to the end of the fiscal year to make sure that the information flows better because that is, uh, every board member's right to have the information in a proper and timely, uh, manner. Um, I've even asked the staff to keep minutes and notes on the meetings, um, so, um, and, uh, and make sure that everybody has the information they, they need because, uh, at the end of the day, I don't care who gets this contract. Uh, I just know that this jail inmate health is serious business and, um, uh, you know, we, well, and, and all of the, uh, you know, Samantha Ainge and, and the general statutes and the attorneys and all of this thing, uh, it has, we have to make sure that it is done right. Uh, because it is a serious, serious issue and, uh, but I appreciate your comments and respect you immensely, Commissioner Johnson, and thank you. Yes, sir. Yeah.
I guess we're in good shape in terms, you know, we had the conundrum at the end of budget year with stuff showing up. Big bills showing up, or, or we, we feel like we're in good shape now with, with billing and where they scrub bills and all that stuff. We feel like we're in a good place there. Cause I know they're involved with this.
Right.
That, that was the concern.
I, I don't know that we may have a vendor that is continuing to find things that we need to look at. So we may get a few more of those, um.
We are finding bills. Some of that is a little bit Southern, some of it's not. Based on what I've learned from research after we got more bills from Northern Hospital, after we received other bills that were pretty significant on top of the ones that we got when we were assured that that was all of them. Some of it is a billing issue with hospitals and the doctors. If they don't bill it, then we don't know it's out there until they bill it. They have up to a year to bill legally. After a year, then it doesn't have to be considered. So some of it's a delay in that. Some of it, Prime may or may not have missed was the answer that I got back on some of it. So billing is still a little bit of an issue. And then some of it is that it was during the transition from Southern to Prime and Southern was going to let Prime take over. And so now Prime has done that. So some of it's done that. And then some of it's just the nature of the inmate medical in the fact that it takes a long time when someone gets sent out for it to actually be paid. It's not overnight because you've got the billing, then you've got the scrubbing, then you've got the sending the bill to us to make sure, because we have to timestamp every one of them to make sure they're really our duty. We have to then make sure that there are no other things that come into play that may pay for the bill instead of us. Then after that's done, and then the Sheriff's Department approves it, it goes back to them. We're billed for it, then they pay it. So there is a little bit of a longer process in that. And so that's still a little bit, we are getting bills from previous time and that's going to continue. That's not really going to change. That's just the nature of it.
And is there a way, I mean, I guess a way to track, you know, when you take somebody to the hospital, Sheriff's Office to do a spreadsheet or something and send, send a file, keep a live, like a live spreadsheet.
Yes.
So that you kind of have an idea, you know, I don't, I really, that really rubbed me the wrong way last year, and I don't want to be rubbed, rubbed wrong this year in terms of we get a big surprise, another big surprise. That's not good.
Correct.
And like I said, I knew they were involved, they were involved a little bit in this. And it would be nice to have a way to track. If we take somebody to Northern, we take somebody to Hugh Adam, we take somebody to Atrium or to Novant. That, that we kind of have an idea, these people have gone, we're going to get a bill on.
Correct.
Instead of it just pops up and we got $200,000 worth of deals. And now we find out we've got more bills coming. That's not.
And that has been done since the meeting that we had on June 30th. Randy has a spreadsheet. He's been sending it to me monthly. I've been looking at it monthly. So we're in good shape kind of in our new ones. It's really the ones that we don't know about from before that either Southern missed or they're crawling out of the woodwork or, you know, those are the ones that we'll just have to work through. Hopefully, when we get through those, which shouldn't be that long, then it will be a smoother process going forward. Because yes, the Sheriff's Office did institute that from the meeting on June 30th. That is being done. I get a copy of it monthly, kind of go over it and look at how many we have, what they are. He's keeping up when they, when it was billed, when Prime sends saying that they got a bill, when it was paid. They're keeping up with that. Well, for, yeah, you guys, the Prime is the one that we mentioned before that the Sheriff's Office Association has, and they scrub the bills. Yeah. Southern no longer pays our bills. So that's a good thing because the billing, billing is still a bit of an issue. It's just working through all the ones that are left hanging out there that honestly, we have no idea that they're even hanging out there till they show up.
And most of those are that we're aware of now were incurred for the new system that we are using now has been developed.
Correct.
Been part of a learning process. I think in, in some of our clients, they found out, you know, they had an opportunity to bill and they did. And then they found out we'd pay them, and so they billed some more.
Yeah.
I think part of that's going on. Do you agree that's fair to, that fair assessment?
I think that's.
And we want to pay our, doing just bills. But from here forward, this shouldn't be happening if everything goes as, as we have expected it, as we expect it to go.
Correct.
And I'll say too, that not only from that respect for the situation flowing better and improving, you know, it, it's, it's the whole ball of wax under the general statute that regards inmate healthcare. I don't think anyone, I'll be honest with you, I don't believe anyone from here to Asheville was doing it correctly. And I don't think they've had the proper plan. And, and I think we're getting our plan right. I think we're getting our verbiage right. I think we're doing the process diligently and we're making sure. And, and I want to commend you, Denise, because you've done an outstanding job and Laura and Sandy and Samantha and everybody working through this process. And, and I want to say too, county staff is busy and, and county government stays busy and it gets more complex and more complicated all the time. And we have to devote time not only to this, but a lot of other things too. And you just can't focus on one thing for an extended period of time because all the other things suffer. That's just the nature of county government. And, and I want to thank you for, for that. And I think we're getting it right and, and I think it will have a, a plan. And I think the whole thing will be something we can be proud of and, and it'll work for the Sheriff's Department and work for Suri County and the inmates because they deserve adequate healthcare and.
And the provider whoever may wind up with contract.
Whoever it may be. Yes, absolutely. All I want is, is the best for the Sheriff's Department and the county inmate and the taxpayers. So, and thank you. Okay, gentlemen, looking for a motion if you all are inclined to.
Two motion. What have we got?
Yeah, two items that are, one is the extension, the other is the RFP schedule.
Right. Okay, they're on your handout. So.
Looking for a motion?
Yes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the recommendation from Denise Brown that we've just heard from and that we extend the contract with Southern Health Partners for six months with the same rates and terms as the current contract that runs through 12/31/2023. Basically, we're adding six months to the same terms. Six months longevity to the same terms that, which we now operate with Southern.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion?
Go through 6/30/2023.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed? The eyes have it. All right. Another motion there?
Issue an RFP for the timeline provided by our county management.
All right. I have a motion, Commissioner Goins, extend an RFP. Second, Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All righty, let's see what else we got. General county business. Okay, Commissioner Marion, you have anything?
Yeah, I took a, a family trip. Reason I, well, one of the reasons I missed the last meeting, we flew out to Portland, Oregon and Ridgefield, Washington, Seattle. Beautiful, beautiful country, but nothing beats Suri County. So it's good to get back home and back to the Blue Ridge Mountains.
All right, Commissioner Goins.
All right, just to say I appreciate all that our chambers, our city and towns are doing to bring people into Suri County and Autumn Lease Festival this weekend, great event, well attended. I like the setup this year. They spread it out a little bit and I think it made a little better for folks to get around, around in Mount Airy. But a lot of things going on in Suri County and appreciate that. I do have one thing I've gotten, several, I know several have gotten calls about the stickers at recycle centers. That, I think there's some misunderstandings about those stickers. Those stickers are to protect the citizens of Suri County. That's why we implemented those stickers. If folks didn't get one, they can get one. But that is to protect our landfill. We all pay fees to use our landfill. It is an enterprise fund, which means it makes money to, to fund the operations there at the landfill through public works. So it is an important, that is important for this county. And for other people to come in and use our facilities that pay no taxes. That, that's why we implemented the sticker system. And it's not to be mean, it's not to be mean spirited. And, you know, maybe we've got a little work to do at some of our recycling centers in the way that we deal with people that don't have stickers. But all in all, it is to protect the citizens of this county and the taxpayers of this county. And I wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you, and I concur. Commissioner Goins. Commissioner Tucker?
Not much, except thanks for everybody's participation tonight on the stickers. That is an interesting item. I've had a lot of phone calls as well. Suri County Landfield operates as its own enterprise. It only survives by the money that it takes in and the money that it spends out. It doesn't operate off county taxes. It operates off fees that it generates. It keeps its head above water. When we realized, and we have realized for some time, that garbage comes from out of state and out of county, it made sense that we start verifying that people do live in Suri County that get the use out of the landfill at no charge. That has been a conundrum, so help us pass the word that we didn't do that to try to make complications for our citizens. This board took action knowing that it was going to cause some stir, but we did that because we felt like we were looking after our citizens to try to at least verify that you live in Suri County. When you go to the Suri County landfills or to Suri County recycling centers and, and just deposit your garbage, it's for Suri County citizens. It's not for Virginia residents as much as we love our northern neighbors. It's not for bordering counties. It's for that, that, that can do that for free. It's for Suri County citizens. So help us spread that word that if you'll just simply get a free sticker that we're trying to give you to verify to the attendant, hey, I'm a Suri County resident. That's all we're asking. And, you know, some folks don't, don't like to be reminded that they ought to do anything. In the real world, we're trying to, we're trying to look after the best interests of Suri County. Appreciate you bringing that up. It's been a hot topic of mine this week as well. Appreciate everybody's participation. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, it was noted by Mr. Martin Collins earlier in our open forum that he feels like we have the authority to do something about this surprise after 30 years of having the same address and all it involves is vacant lots or something. If we have the authority, I'd like to know it. I, I've only had to do it as a resident, change an address due to things, and that was very fair. But it, it was even costly to a residence to notify everybody that you've had a changed address. You haven't moved, but your address has changed. So I'd like, I'd like, I'd like, if we could, Mr. Chairman, I wish we could follow up on that somehow or another. I, I don't mean to make an exception or anything, but just going by what Mr. Collins was saying, that we done away with the 1300 block. I, I don't, I just, I'd like to know, because this is going to cost this business owner who's worked her whole life over thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars. And she didn't have to bring it up. I know, I knew it would, all the different things. And I wish we, if we have the authority, I wish we could do something about that particular block on short, on, on South Main Street there.
Mr. Johnson, I did, I, I did ask county management to, to look into that and, and to bring that back to us. What, what our options would be in terms of what, what options we had in terms of, could we change it? Look at the ordinance, change it ordinance, whatever, whatever the options were to bring those back to us at our next meeting.
Well, does the, does the property owner, the business owner, do they have a little leadway? Is it, do they have a little time that they don't have to go start making all these changes? I mean, do they have a little leniency?
Two weeks to the next, to our next meeting, three weeks to the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll huddle in the morning and we'll keep.
And that's another thing, you know, I didn't know about that till today. I don't like the sound of it. Does it look good? Does it sound good? Does it smell good? And if it were my business and I own one, I'd be right over here in Suri County saying, wait a minute, how the world has changed my address without me hardly even having time to know it. So I hope y'all huddle in the morning, and I'm very interested in the outcome of this as well.
I believe as, quicker we could get an answer, the quicker we could move on this. And, and, you know, it's like Commissioner Johnson said, you address change for residents. You got to order new checks, DMV. It, it affects everything. And I can't imagine all the rebranding and cards and all, all the advertising, how much it would cost for just an address change, especially since you didn't know about it. So I'd like to see this happen ASAP.
All right, gentlemen, anything else? All I want to say is our Autumn Lease Festival was very nice, very good weather, and I enjoyed my attendance there. And the Jeb Stewart Camp had a very successful event up at Ararat. At Jeb Stewart Home Place or Birthplace up there. Also, I wanted to, Suri Adken Works, I'm on the Advisory Committee for Suri Adken Works through the college there. And, but, well, no, through my capacity as county commissioner, the chairman is on the Suri Adken Works. So I wanted to give this report 2023, 2022, 2023. Give that to Larry and Andrew and Chris. And. There you go. This update on Suri Adken Works has become phenomenally successful. And the director has done some out of state presentations and achieved great recognition throughout the state. And it's beginning to attract some attention nationwide, actually. So very nice brochure, give you status of what's going on there. Was 104 businesses served in Suri County, 2,159 credentials earned. Just a lot of good stuff in there. You folks look it over and just wanted you to have that. So. And I'm, let's see, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closures, Chairman.
Motion Commissioner Goins to go into closed session. Second, Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All those in favor, I. Opposed? The eyes have it. We are going in closed session.
Last year, this was just.
Yeah. Which one? Right here.
Another thing happened. Was not on there. Let me reprint the first, first page without them on here.
Yeah, just reprint, okay, yeah, just reprint the first page.
I didn't either. I don't know who was on the committee.
I don't. If I, I have not tried to.
Last college meeting, they didn't have me as being an attending on the business. I think you do.
This is the.
Oh. All of a sudden?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Wish put me on the short line right here. Look at there.
Look at there.
Yes, it was great.
I'm sorry.
No action, correct.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Tucker motions go in second, all in favor.